All right, and if my notice of this special meeting of the zoning board adjustment was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and Post Star, our official newspapers. It's echoing. On June 30th, 2020, and a copy of the notice was posted on the Fulton Board of the Municipal Building and on the borough's website. Take roll call, we have Mr. Fowler. You remember to unmute yourself before you speak.
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Malango?
Here.
Mr. Kopoly? You're gonna unmute yourself. Mr. Kopoly is here. Mr. Gregg?
Here.
Mr. Lisco?
Here. Do we need to wait for Mr. Kopoly? We'll note that he's here, but he didn't unmute his phone when he said it.
All right.
Okay, all right, so welcome to the July 28th, 2020 Board of Adjustments meeting. Will you please join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're gonna jump right into the applications and save the reading of past resolutions for the end of the meeting. Our first applicant is Drew and Beth Fromkin at 201 South Lake Drive.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Kennedy, you wanna, you wanna start us off here?
Sure, so good evening, as in the good old days, we'd say as the applicant team comes forward, so like it's now we say as the applicant team zooms in. So what we'll do is we will mark into the record, we as a board have before, I guess first we should say, is there anyone out here, well, let me, sorry, let me just back up by saying in terms of the open public statement, this is a special meeting, and what we did as required by law, we advertised the meeting in the newspapers, and we advertised it in two newspapers, April, correct? April, yeah, and we posted it on the Borough Hall website, and we posted it with our friend, the Borough Clerk. So this is a lawfully convened special meeting. And the other thing, just for the record, for people who are, might be tuning in or listening, we have asked the applicants to notice in a way that advertised the notice, advertised the, you know, the old fashioned notice, what needed to be included, but we also had them print the login directions and advise that plans and application materials are available and online and can be reviewed, and if people were having access issues, access issues or barriers to reviewing this document, they were told to contact our Board Secretary so that special accommodations could be made. So against that.
Hold on, Kevin. I think it was Ted where we're getting some feedback from.
I'm muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
That's much better, thank you.
Okay, April, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, this is a lawfully convened special meeting, so that was what we just wanted to say. And then, in terms of this application, we are going to ask, April, why don't you give the, your email address, because I'm going to ask if people have any comments about the notice, they can call in or email in or raise their computer arms, so just for the record, could you recite your email?
It's clerk@belmar.com.
Okay, and so while we're doing that, let's just come back to that for a moment. Ted, if you could raise your right hand, you are the zoning officer and construction official for Borough of Belmar. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, if you provide any, will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, let the record reflect, the witness has been sworn. And if there's anyone here who has any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received, I would ask that you raise your hand now or email in to April. April, let us know if we have anything.
No, we don't.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, the Board Secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order. That would be my humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed. And what we can do is we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. A1 will be the development application package dated April 3rd, 2020. And then, A2 will be the Borough of Belmar application checklist. That's associated with the application. A3 will be the Borough of Belmar Minor Land Use Certificate zoning permit, and that is dated April 3rd, 2020, and April 6th, 2020. A4 is a boundary and topographic survey prepared by Morgan Engineering, and that is dated, oh, let's see, very small print, July 7th, 2019, no, July 17th, 2019. A5 is a picture or rendering presumably of the home, and we'll have Mr. Shipers confirm that momentarily. And then, A6 is the plot plan prepared by KBA Engineering Services, and it's dated April 1st, 2020. And it looks like it's one sheet, and then, A7 would appear to be the architectural plans prepared by Rice and Brown, and that is dated, find a date here, March 30th, 2020, consisting of four sheets. So I think that's it, Mr. Chairman, and that having been said, we can turn it over to Mr. Shipers.
Kevin, did you get the exhibit that Bill emailed earlier today?
Oh, you know what, I didn't, I didn't print that, so what is that? We'll mark that as A8, and what is that?
It was a three, oh, Bill's on mute, hold on, go ahead.
The rendering that you've already marked, I believe, as A5, I want to make sure you have.
Okay.
I think we didn't see it online, so we wanted to make sure that you have it, and I think you'll have it.
Okay, so nothing's at A8 yet, good evening, Mr. Shipers.
Thank you, good evening, Ms. Claudio, members of the board, our code enforcement officer, I think I got you all, for the record, William Shipers, Chammy Shipers, Wonski, Belmar, and Esprunzak, on behalf of the applicant, Fromkin, to my immediate right is Representative Fromkin's Drew Fromkin, to my far right, who will come on screen when necessary, the renowned architect Christopher Rice is in the house today. Joe Kociuwa is, should be out there, is Joe, how are you, Joe? Joe Kociuwa is our project engineering sport net goatee and a nice sport coat this evening for us, and he will ultimately be my first witness. I'm asking you to swear at this time, Mr. Kociuwa, Mr. Rice, and Mr. Fromkin.
All right, so Joe, we'll start with you, if you could just state your full name?
Joseph Kociuwa, K-O-C-I-U-B-A, KBA Engineering Services, Madison Square, New Jersey.
Okay, and you are testifying tonight in your capacity as?
Both a professional engineer, professional planner.
Okay, and Chris Rice, your full name?
Christopher Rice, R-I-C-E, Licensed Architect, New Jersey, offices in Seeger, New Jersey.
Okay, and the third individual, Bill?
That's Mr. Drew Fromkin, he's to my immediate right, he's gonna raise his hand.
Okay, and Mr. Fromkin, can you just spell your name?
S, it's F as in Frank, R-O-M as in Mary, K-I-N.
All right, so gentlemen, if you would all raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
Okay, and let the record reflect that all three witnesses have been sworn.
My first witness will be Joseph Kociuwa, he's of KBA Engineering. Good evening, Joe.
Evening.
Notwithstanding that we're doing this Zoom proceeding, we understand it's either being recorded by tape or a court reporter out there, we aren't creating a formal record as if we were at our normal meeting hearings within the Belmar Municipal Building. I'm gonna ask you to speak clearly, speak loudly, sometimes pause for a second to make sure if there's questions that the linkage hooks up, so we're not talking over each other. Notwithstanding, I believe most everyone's knowledge of you, your history and your reputation, I am creating a record, so I'm gonna ask you to give us briefly your education, a brief CV, your experience in Monmouth County, and particularly within Belmar.
Certainly, so I'm a licensed engineer, licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor's and master's degree from Rowan University in Civil and Structural Engineering. I have 15 years' experience in the field, have testified before numerous boards in Monmouth County, including Belmar on numerous occasions.
I would offer Mr. Kociuwa as an expert both in engineering and in planning.
Thank you, Mr. Kociuwa, we'll accept those credentials, welcome to Belmar.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Lisco. Mr. Kociuwa, I'm gonna call you Joe, no disrespect. Joe, I'd like to take you through how you were retained very briefly in this matter, what your chore was to determine via survey and any drive-by or meetings, what is existing at the site. I'm then gonna ask you to go through your existing zone grid as you've prepared it from both existing, required, and proposed. We'll get into some planning testimony, but let's start with what's existing on the Fromkin lot and what the intent thereof for redevelopment.
Certainly, so there's an existing two-and-a-half-story frame dwelling on the property. It's a corner property in the corner of South Lake Avenue, A Street. Maintains a front porch along the northern, eastern, and western sides, also has a detached garage off the corner of the existing home, on the southwest corner of the home. The existing garage is non-conforming and setback, it's a little more than two feet from the property line currently, where five feet is required, I'm sorry, three feet is required. There is a driveway access out to A Street with a curb cut that is currently non-conforming. It's at 20, get the number correct, 20.1 feet existing. The, the house and majority of the property is above the flood elevation of 10. Just the front portion of the property is lower. Anyone who's familiar with the site or seen the site knows there's a pretty moderate slope from the sidewalk up to the remainder of the property.
Okay, take us through what the request was of you via both Mr. Fromkin and your interactions with Architect Rice.
Certainly, so the Fromkins had an intention that they wanted to eliminate the existing detached garage, provided in a more conforming location, move it forward in order to be able to utilize the rear yard and provide separation from the neighboring property, while also providing room for a pool in the rear, technically, side of the property, and have a small addition on the east side of the property where the, right now, the home is a little further from the street. The proposed additions will be conforming in setback from the front on A Street, as well as from the side, however, there is a existing or a proposed rear yard setback variance being requested this evening. There's also a change to the stairway accessing the porch from the South Lake Drive side. We're proposing to relocate those stairs further east and provide a pool surrounding patio in the rear with a walkway to the front and a larger driveway area on the east side of the proposed garage.
All right, so the first demographic I wanna address, and we'll come back to it, well, you know what, I'll hold that for a second. The garage, as currently set, is within the side yard setback of Mr. Mangione's property to the west, is that correct?
Correct.
And essentially, the intent was to slide the garage forward, put a mudroom in between that, and therefore, the Fromkins can enjoy passageway from a garage into their mudroom, into their home for the non-lovely nine months or eight months of the year that we get in nor'easters in Belmar, is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
From a pure planning perspective and a layout of this lot, the proposed location of the garage and mudroom from a planning perspective, do you have an opinion as to whether it is a better zoning alternative of the proposed location of the garage and mudroom versus existing setup?
I would, it's my opinion it's in a better location from a planning standpoint. Again, the existing detached garage performing is very close to that western property line. The proposed location pulls away from that line, providing airlight and open space to that neighboring property. There is, by virtue of this lot being a corner lot, it does have a side and a rear, and by definition, the side yard is the western side, the rear being the southern side. So there is a technical variance for rear yard setback for this proposed garage expansion or attached garage area. However, if you're familiar with the street, the house immediately to the south faces out towards A Street. So when looking at this from A Street, this appears and acts more like a side yard than it does a rear. The side yard setback for this would be five feet required. The proposed setback is 10.08. So from a planning perspective, I believe that the location is certainly appropriate for this type of construction, appropriate visually from the street, provides airlight and open space that would be expected between two houses that both face out towards A Street. So I believe this is an appropriate location and a better planning alternative than the existing detached garage.
And in fact, that was an intentional design spec, Joe, was it not, the three professionals, including myself and Mr. Fromkin, we evaluated placement of that garage, we recognized it could be three feet away from potentially the, both southerly and westerly property, and it was intentionally designed, by design, to pull it into its current location, which gives a minimum 10 feet to the southerly and the broader expanse away from Mr. Mangione's property to the west, correct?
That's all correct, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to move towards your zoning grid. I look at this as a relatively modest or fairly simple zoning application. I don't see a whole lot of twists and turns to it, but there is a bit of a uniqueness with, usually I'm before this board trying to put a very large home on a three or four, 5,000 square foot lot. You're oftentimes my engineer, and tonight, we somewhat have the inversion of that. We have a 10,622 square foot lot, which somewhat flip-flops both building coverage and impervious coverage, and this is actually an R-50 zone. So can you talk about from both a zoning, a planning, and from a density component that those two drive, how that affects a 10,000 lot in an R-50?
Certainly, so the lot being 10,622 square feet is substantially larger than what's required in the zone. The, we are requesting relief from the building coverage and lot coverage requirements. The, however, the lot is almost, well, it's double the size of what's permitted in the zone. So 5,000 square foot is the standard lot size in the R-50 zone. A corner lot requires 6,000 square feet. This lot is essentially a corner lot and an interior lot combined. If this were those size lots, from an impervious coverage standpoint, any lot between 5,051 square feet and just under 7,000 square feet is permitted, 55% of impervious coverage. The proposal we have is 52.99%, and I do want to bring attention to, we have the existing calculated at 19.68%, which is incorrect, I do apologize. That did not include the building coverage on the lot. So the existing impervious coverage on the lot is actually 50.53%. We're increasing that slightly, the 52.99%, but development on a lot this size, which would typically be two homes, would be allowed to be as, up to 55% of impervious coverage.
I'm sorry, Joe, what did you say has to be corrected? That was 19.68%?
19 points, the existing maximum lot coverage should be 50.53%.
50.53.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
So it's my professional opinion that the proposed impervious coverage is appropriate for this area, appropriate for the zone, appropriate for this lot, given the fact that, you know, conforming lots in the zone would see the same amount of impervious coverage, 55%, actually a little bit more, we're proposing 55%, we're proposing 50, just slightly under 53%. From a building coverage standpoint, the same, the same applies, that a lot of 5,051 to just under 7,000 square feet is permitted, 30% impervious, plus a detached garage of 240 square feet, plus accessory building. When you look at it in that, in that fashion, developed as two lots, this would be permitted to have upwards of 36% building coverage, when you include a lot. What we're proposing here is just under 35%. So again, commensurate with what's permitted on other lots in the area, commensurate with the area. So it's our, my opinion that the proposed building coverage is appropriate for this lot, does not do a disservice to the zone planners, zoning ordinance, and is, you know, acceptable for this property. We're also providing the benefit, as we discussed, of taking a non-conforming setback for the garage and creating a lot more airlight and open space in that rear yard, the western side, by virtue of the design. So the, both of those, I believe, certainly justify the relief being requested.
Okay, and somewhat wrapping your testimony up, you have a existing non-conformity on the front yard setback porch, South Lake Avenue, I'd just like a little bit of testimony on that, and a little bit on the curb cut that is pre-existing, non-conformity, and then I'm gonna bring you in some little bit of engineering questions.
Certainly, so the existing front yard setback to the porch is at the northwest corner of the house. That's an existing non-conformity at 8.6 feet, as the board is certainly aware. 20-foot front yard setback is required, and you're permitted to extend a porch eight feet into that, which leaves you with a 12-foot setback to the porch would be permitted. That's an existing non-conformity, and as you see on the plan, this is a unique property, not only because it's a corner lot, but it's a corner lot on an acute angle. So that particular corner is 8.6 feet, however, the opposite corner, the porch is back at 25 feet. So that existing non-conformity is not being exacerbated by this application, and I think is certainly appropriate, given the shape of the lot. As far as the curb cuts concerned, the 20.1-foot curb cut exists there today. We're not proposing to change that, we wanna maintain that as it is today. We'll also allow for, you know, access into the driveway as it is today. So we feel that that's certainly appropriate as it exists. We're not detracting from any on-street parking by reducing that. We're not gonna create any new on-street parking, so we feel it's appropriate to maintain it as is.
Thank you, Joe, the few, a few engineering questions that I know this board prefers to hear some testimony on. First, you're, we're rebuilding, connecting a mudroom, we're creating some more surface area, perhaps for rainwater collection. What is your proposal regarding stormwater or rainwater being taken off the roof of the addition and making sure it's not running off onto the other two adjacent properties, and how are you handling stormwater?
Certainly, so this particular lot has the benefit of being an elevated lot that all drains out to the streets, drains out to both A Street and to South Lake. So we've maintained that flow pattern, creating a crown essentially where the pool is, and allowing all the stormwater to run north and east out to the roadways as it does today. We've also enhanced that by proposing a yard drain system in the rear yard that would extend out to a pop-up emitter near A Street to further enhance the drainage in that backyard and just ensure that there's not gonna be any off-site drainage onto adjacent properties. All the runoff will run to the street as it does today.
Okay, like to ask you a little about proposal for where any replacement or new air conditioning condensers are gonna be field located, and any recommendations for type and/or screening?
Certainly, so there's three existing air conditioning units that are there today in the, on the A Street side of the home. The intention is that those positions would be maintained, however, the units would likely be changed out for larger tonnage units to account for the added square footage. So the locations will remain exactly where they are today, but we do anticipate providing some screening by virtue of some landscaping, some, a hedge or something between the walkway and the AC units that they're less unsightly. Currently, there is no screening, they've been there for a substantial amount of time. They have not had a detrimental impact on the neighborhood, but we feel the screen would certainly provide a little bit more of an enhancement.
Are utilities available at the street, and how do utilities currently come into the property?
Utilities are available at the street, water and sewer are all connected, existing into South Lake Drive, that will be maintained. There's electric that, electric and telephone that extends overhead to the property from a pole on A Street. The intention is that they're going to look at an underground solution, but if that's cost prohibitive, which we anticipate it may be, we would maintain the electrical connection the way it is today, being the connection from the pole across A Street to the property.
Let's see, I think that probably takes care of my current questions. If I have any others, I ask you to stay connected, we'll come back to you.
I'm here.
Next witness would be Christopher Rice, Architect.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Rice.
Similar, Mr. Rice, would you please give the board benefit of your education, brief CV, experience before boards Monmouth and Belmar?
Sure, so Licensed Architect in New Jersey, educated at Clemson University. I've got about 30, a little more than 30 years' experience as a residential architect here in Southern Monmouth. My office is in Seeger. The bulk of our work is between really Avon and Manaloka. We only do residential projects like this one.
I would move that the 30 years of Mr. Rice's experience is creeping towards a lot of experience, but I think he's got enough under his belt to offer him as an expert tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, welcome to Belmar, we'll accept those credentials.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rice, I'm gonna ask you to take the board somewhat succinctly, I think they have your plans, they're very adept at reading floor plans and elevations, but can you take them through? And then, what I'm gonna ask you to do, I'm gonna somewhat slide some of my notes which talk about materials, roofs, decks, things of that nature, I'm gonna let you give this presentation.
Sure, so, again, thank you. If I could draw your attention to the 3D rendering that you all should have in your pocket, it's the one drawing that looks like a photorealistic rendering of the proposal. Um, big picture, concept, uh, for the Frumpkins. Um, their existing garage, as Mr. Kishuba mentioned, uh, is extremely, uh, importantly located presently. So the project started by moving that garage to a more, um, to, to a more desirable location for zoning purposes. And then what we wanted to do was basically restore the house that's there. Um, hopefully you all know the house, have been by it at least recently, knowing that it was on tonight. Um, you'll see that it's probably, uh, in need of, um, just a little, uh, pick-me-up, right? So our intentions are to replace siding, replace roofing, um, and things like that, new trim. Uh, so again, basically restore the old town that's there. However, by moving the garage forward, uh, towards the east, um, as Mr. Kishuba and Mr. Shiper's mentioned, um, it became a nice zoning alternative to have that garage further from our southerly border, right? To provide 10 feet there versus, what, 3? Um, so we decided to connect the garage to the home with a mudroom. And I think that's what the rendering, I asked you to look at, uh, probably depicts best is that unlike a lot of attached garages, uh, that can sometimes be as big as the home, um, or be what we call an integral garage, what we're doing is simply taking a one-and-a-half-story garage and attaching it to the two-and-a-half-story home with just a one-story mudroom. So we hope you'll appreciate, um, the efforts we made architecturally to let the existing main house stand tall and remain as is, newly renovated, and let the mudroom and the garage continue to feel like accessory structures, uh, to the property. Um, so again, a lot of thought, um, architecturally, uh, the Frumpkins were kind enough to let us uh, take this a little further than they maybe, uh, wanted to, uh, to improve a lot more of the home than initially anticipated. So, um, for example, on, on your list here, Bill, other than new siding, new roofing, we will be replacing all of the railings. We'll be replacing all of the columns. Uh, we're actually moving the entry to the front of the home, although the home faces South Lake. Um, instead of entering into the existing family room, we're gonna slide it east so that you enter into a new entry foyer. Again, it's all gonna be done, um, all in good taste with the, the history and the style of this, uh, existing home. Um, so again, just big picture, um, the enclosure or partial enclosure of an existing side porch to allow for a new foyer entry, and then of course, the mudroom, uh, that I spoke about connecting to the garage. That's all that really occurs, um, at the first floor level upstairs, um, and throughout the house without boring you. Presently, the home has about five bedrooms. If this is approved tonight, we're still gonna have five bedrooms, but we'll have five better bedrooms. So we are moving the master bedroom around. We are improving all of the plumbing. Um, closets were tremendously lacking in a home like this, as you can imagine. So again, without walking you through every step of it, um, the small additions and renovations that we're doing are in an effort to just improve the rooms they already have and change the flow of the home. Um, but again, the big, big picture and what was most important to us and, and the Frumpkins as well was that the home, um, if approved, when complete, looks like a much newer, safer version of what's there with a much, uh, better situated garage, um, and mudroom, which is very practical, of course. And then it frees up their backyard for, uh, typical backyard stuff. So I, I hope I hit all your points there.
Uh, you made it, you made a valiant effort. I'm gonna ask you about the materials for the siding and the roof and the deck and the railings, because I know the board, uh, in a succinct way would like to hear what type of materials you're, uh, recommending for the project.
Sure. So, um, again, if you look at the rendering, you'll see, uh, presently what we anticipate the color scheme to be. Um, so the siding will either be a, uh, white or red cedar shingle. Um, Hardy, of course, makes a similar product, but, um, in either case, we'll be using something, um, that will be, uh, pre-stained and painted. We're not looking for, uh, any natural materials to weather naturally. We're looking to, you know, pick a color and, and kind of run with that. Um, the roofing will probably be, as, you know, you know, uh, like a, one of those, you know, whether it's 80 or whatever, timberline roofing, um, something far superior, um, that's than what's there. Um, the windows are gonna remain. Uh, there are some windows that have to be replaced. Of course, we'll use something that's better than what's there. Um, the trim, I know you've heard 100 times, is that new product, AZAC? Not so new anymore, actually. Um, but, uh, again, all maintenance-free, um, very durable, hopefully rather, uh, very relevant, uh, to the style of the home. The color will probably change a little bit. Um, you know, we're not sure if it's gonna be the white as you see in your rendering. Hopefully, it looks that way in your rendering, um, but it will be a, a complimentary, uh, light color like that.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Uh, Mr. Chairman, with that, um, Mr. Frumpkin is available if we need him for any questions, but I think his professionals have set forth the application. From my perspective, this is a very small request that we're making on a very large, almost twice the size lot. We're asking just to keep the existing, uh, front porch setback. No one would ask to, whoever I would think in, in the right mind to rip off that beautiful porch. We're looking to place the garage where we've discussed was, which creates, because of this type of lot being on a corner, a rear setback issue, but it really lives as a side yard setback. Mr. Kishuba eloquently and succinctly, uh, discussed both the impervious and lot covered effectively would have been the minimus, uh, if at all variance if we look at this under. Uh, it has two, two I-50 lots and, uh, the maximum curb cut on, uh, the side street candidly is beautiful, will be functional. And, uh, this home, I think, has always had a bit of a stately, um, presence sitting up on the little hill. It, it has. And I thank Mr. Frumpkin for the opportunity, uh, and trust being retained. Really, I think this is gonna be a, a stately statement home on the lake in Belmar. It's terrific. And, uh, we're here for any questions that you might have.
Terrific. Thanks, everybody. Uh, with that, we'll open it right up to, uh, board questions and we'll start with Mr. Malingo.
Good evening. I like the application a lot. I think there was a lot of effort put into this application for design, especially for the neighbors and especially for the neighborhood. Bill, you answered one of my major questions, which everybody knows about water and drainage. Oh, he said there's gonna be a seepage pit, correct? In the rear yard or side yard?
Oh, go back over what you, uh, recommended.
Certainly. So what we have is a, a series of yard drains that would discharge towards the front of the property. We, we don't show a seepage pit per se. We show drainage to bring it around to the front of the property.
Bring everything around to the slope.
Exactly.
Right. Okay. I don't have any further questions. I like the design. I think it will show a little bit of a benefit to the neighborhood. Uh, relocating the garage was a very big plus for me. And, uh, that's no, no further questions, Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Malingo. Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, you're up next.
Hey, good evening, everybody. How you doing tonight? Uh, I, my questions, I, 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 I really, the, the, the look, it just looks great. Um, I am curious, though, about the, uh, the second, uh, uh, the, the space above the garage, what it is today and then what it's gonna be after this project is completed.
Yeah, Mr. Frumpkin's gonna answer that.
Yeah, today it's a, um, yeah. We're a little distancing. Um, thank you for your question. Uh, today it's actually a loft, um, and it's open to the garage below. We're effectively gonna recreate the same, uh, situation. I, I don't know code in town, but I think we'll do it in a way that's, you know, a safer, better, uh, loft for usage and it will access from the mudroom. But it's gonna be the same, effectively the same layout as it is today.
Did you know the difference in square footage, um, that's gonna be up there?
Uh, one day.
I think we're gonna give you back, uh, Mr. Rice for that.
You wanna go with him? Thank you.
Hi. Uh, so again, I think the best way to answer that question is, uh, what's there today? Do you have the, um, system?
Yes, I think, right?
There, there. Yeah. Um, it's basically two-car, right? Oversized two-car, what's there today?
Oh, yeah. If that oversizes.
Yeah. So, you know, what's there today is a two-car garage and what we're proposing is a three-car garage. But to answer your question about a loft space, um, we haven't taken full advantage of that extra bay, but there will be extra square footage out there. We're going up to about maybe 600 square foot. What's there could be closer to, you know, four, uh, but we are enlarging it by about a third.
Okay. And, and is that, what's that space gonna be used for?
So I think it's, uh, you know, a lot of times we call it bonus, uh, space and things like that. I don't know that Mr. Frumpkin, have you actually identified what you're gonna do there? No, it's just.
Not really. I mean, I, my wife would like an opportunity to work out somewhere. I think that's probably where she'll, she'll use it.
Yeah. My, my reason for my question is, is just if that, if that's a bedroom, it changes, you know, the parking requirements come into play and you might be, you might still be okay with it. But I just wanna, wanna know, because if it's a bedroom, it, it then goes to a parking calculation.
Sure. No, thanks for your question. Uh, it will not be a sleeping area. No, specifically designed not to be. It will be, as I defined it, as a bonus room where it might be an exercise area. It could be a, you know, a studio for painting, drawing, whatever, but certainly not a sleeping area.
Okay. And then, and then the, um, towards the, uh, as I'm looking at the garage, towards the right, um, under the current picture, it's, it seems to be like an open ground-level porch or patio-type area. But under the new drawing, it seems to be be getting enclosed with six windows. So could you talk about that a little bit? Because I didn't hear that in the application being discussed.
I'm sorry. Are you talking about the, uh, the northeast corner of the home where the wraparound porch is?
Yes. Uh, it looks like on the first floor.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, currently open porch area or patio area. And it looks like in the future state, it's going to, a room is gonna be created there. You're enclosing the porch is what I'm saying for.
Correct. Yeah. So if you look at sheet A dash one, uh, that's the, uh, first floor plan, which you all have. Uh, what you're referring to, I believe, is the entry vestibule. So again, the, the existing home has a wraparound porch, both on the west, north, and east side. And what we wanna do is just enclose that portion, it's about two-thirds of the easterly porch. That's gonna be the new front door. So you'll see that the new front door enters you into a vestibule so that you can, um, I don't wanna say quicker, get to the kitchen, but you won't have to traverse the family room, which is the situation today. Um, but hopefully you'll also notice when you look at the rendering, we want it to still look like it was a porch. The balcony above it remains, the columns remain. We're basically gonna infill from column to column with that series of, uh, six windows. Um, again, that was a big part of the design so that it, again, continues to look like a renovated porch with the existing balcony above.
Right. And there's no, and there's no, by moving that wall out from what is currently the wall plus a porch with a balcony, um, or, or porch with a railing, moving that wall out to where, you know, in the new drawing, it's six windows, th- there's no setback or no variance associated with having to, to enclose that space.
Let me just refer Mr. Kishuba's drawing to listed, uh, South Lake issue. So I'll defer to Joe quickly. So Joe, the question is on A Street, um, you know, the existing porch is at 14.9 and our enclosure will be that or greater, right? So, uh, so is there an issue with the existing 14.9?
The existing 14.9, uh, I believe is an existing non-conformity for the porch as it has a, a, a deck above it.
Right.
So that the enclosure there would be considered, uh, you know, building, uh, at a, uh, front setback of 14.9. Uh, but I believe the existing is also non-conforming to that too.
Gotcha. Okay, understood. Uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, did I answer your question? So.
I, I, I think so, but I just wanna make sure that it's in the application because if the existing is, is non-conforming because it's a porch and the new is non-conforming same distance 14.9, but it's an enclosed room, I just wanna make sure that we're not triggering a variance based on the fact it's gonna be, uh, a room now as opposed to being an open porch. Just as you said earlier, uh, you know, you're allowed an eight-foot porch going into the setback. Well, this is no longer an eight-foot porch. It's gonna be a room. So.
Correct. So you.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I think you have, um, appropriately brought, brought up, um, potential variants that, uh, I'm not so sure was identified. Uh, because of it transitioning from an existing porch to an actual room, because the porch would have been allowed to intrude at a minimum of six to eight feet into that setback, which, which is a 14 and change. And so it would still be generally compliant, as we would always say. But making it into a room, uh, you may require a 20-foot setback at that portion. And if we interpret it that way, I would move to amend for that six-foot potential differential or five-and-a-half feet potential differential as a second front yard setback variance.
Right. 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 Okay. And then, um, one last question, I promise. Um, the, um, the pool, um, how does that get calculated against lot coverage? I thought like pool, you get like 50% credit or something like that. Is, is, is the pool in your, uh, lot coverage calculations or how is it calculated?
My understanding is that the pool itself is not calculated, but the coping is. I, I would defer to Ted if there was a different policy that way.
Yes, that's correct. The pool water's not, but the coping is.
And, uh, it has been calculated that way on my plan.
Okay. Great. I have no further questions except, you know, we just wanna make sure that we get that, um, get that enclosure, uh, noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Uh, Mr. Bianchi, just to follow up on what Mr. Fitzgerald said, um, do, do we need to look at the average setback for that porch enclosure now on the, I guess, on A Street? For the, for the house, I guess that would be to the south of this.
Yeah. How many, how many houses on that block?
Just one more.
There's only one, there's only one other. I think I did that application and I believe when I did that application, my second side yard setback over there was 15. And I think we're at, what are we, at 14.5?
We're, no, 14.9, but we're gonna make it 15.
All right, we could, all right.
Sure.
So I can test.
Says we can make it at 15.
That, that, sorry. You can make it, what, at 15, Bill?
The, the, uh, new, you know, the new renovated porch on the easterly portion of the building that Mr. Fitzgerald.
That would be a 15-foot.
Yeah. I think it would have to be called out as a second front yard setback.
I'm sorry, I'm calling it 15-foot, uh, front yard setback.
But as appropriately raised by whoever.
Absolutely.
Whoever raised it, Mr. Fitzgerald or someone else. That may be the average setback, though, because the other house to the south, I think, is only a 15-foot setback. And if that's the case, I don't think it's a variance condition at that point.
And I, I would, I believe you are correct. That porch is actually, uh, three stories, uh, so would not constitute a porch, uh, under the ordinance. You're allowed, uh, uh, only one story, uh, so I, and looking at an aerial, uh, I would agree that that, uh, does appear to be, uh, the case, that it is at a 15-foot setback. Being the only other lot on this frontage, uh, of this street, uh, that would be the average.
It may be easier to say, I don't know if you can say it. The bottom one is the Frumpkin. The top one is the other one. The other one sits closer to the street than the Frumpkin.
I have the aerial on my screen, if I'm allowed to share my screen, if that way, if the board feels the need to see it.
I think if we call it out at 15 and if we call it out as, as, to be careful, a 15-foot second front yard setback variance, whether it, whether it ultimately would prove to be the average setback or qualitative variance, as long as we address it in the resolution, if we were so fortunate to be approved, I think we're covered.
I agree.
Uh, thanks for answering that. All right. Uh, Mr. Capoli, you're up next.
Yeah. The only other question I have, um, is above the, um, garage. Yeah. It said there's gonna be like an open balcony area. Is that correct?
Yeah. So he, he called it a loft, um, but it's not open to the garage below. We're gonna still off the garage for obvious reasons.
The, um, and I'm sure the fire marshal will, will make, and Ted, it's kinda, I know you're not the fire marshal, but we have to be, uh, careful of CO2 in there. Is that not correct? So all the proper protection should be put in there as far as detectors or whatever, because it is above a garage. You know, God forbid if somebody starts a car and somebody's upstairs exercising and doesn't hear it. Now, these new homes are so well insulated, you don't hear these new cars, they run so quiet. You know, so just make sure that we have the proper, uh, CO2 protection there, which I'm sure you will, the fire marshal probably would catch that too, but I just wanted to throw that in there. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli. All right, uh, Mr. Fowler, you're up next, and just a reminder, you're on mute.
I'm unmuted now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, gentlemen and lady. Um, now, I'm curious, how long has this, uh, gentleman been residing at this residence?
May of two thousand and sixteen, sir.
So two thousand and sixteen, so one day you looked up, or looked at your wife and you said, I want a mudroom and a garage and an in-ground pool?
Uh, no, we wanted to make this our permanent home, and we've always had an interest in making certain improvements and, you know, making this our full-time residence, so.
Okay, so, go ahead. So it's a second, it's a secondary residence at present?
Currently, correct.
Okay, um, the garage, um, is going to be moved, correct?
Yes.
Is that what you were discussing? All right, and it's going to go from a two car to a three car?
It's gonna be raised and then rebuilt. We're not moving. We're not preserving anything that exists, we're raising it.
Okay, all right, is there any plumbing in that garage? Is there any hot water, running water?
Uh, there was a, uh, small shower, uh, enclosed in the corner there, but it's never been used. And there's, there's no, uh, active use of water in that.
So are we, are we talking about setting up a little kitchen in there or anything like that? Or is it just going to be a garage for cars and an exercise room upstairs?
Correct, correct.
So that's what it'll be?
Correct.
Okay, all right, um, and you're making some vast improvements to the five bedrooms that you currently have, but we're not changing the footprint of the house at all, correct?
Correct.
All righty, um, okay, that's, uh, that's about, oh, and, uh, so we're, we're putting in an in-ground pool, that sounds sexy. How, uh, how long and deep is that going to be?
I think the dimensions are about eleven and a half feet by twenty eight.
Okay, um, on this, go ahead.
By twenty four, if we may, I'm sorry.
We, uh, we showed twenty four on our plan. Uh, the applicant could expand it to twenty eight. That actually reduces impervious coverage, so.
Right.
Would be permitted by, uh, by zoning.
Okay, um, on the, uh, the upgrade of this garage, is that going to be hindering any neighbor's view at all?
We've gone out of our way to.
Yeah, so presently, the existing garage is clearly in the way of the westerly neighbor.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're making to, uh, move it to the south side of the property. The south neighbor, who is probably used to looking out more onto lawn.
Right.
But it's ten feet away, whereas detached could be three feet away, so the front.
Okay.
That's a great length to provide.
Now, have you had any, uh, at present opposition from any of your neighbors based on your renditions?
Uh, all I can say is they've been overly supportive. I've really appreciated it, they're excited about it. Uh, so the answer is no opposition that I know of.
All right, well, that's excellent. All right, it's a beautiful rendition, and I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler, and, uh, Mr. Greig, you're up.
Uh, on the existing, um, print, it shows a generator on a piece of slate or something. Are you gonna have a generator on the new property?
Yes, we, we expect to maintain the, the same generator and either have it in that area or, uh, perhaps move it on the other side of the garage, but we, we will maintain that generator.
Okay, it doesn't show where you're gonna move it?
Yeah, I, I noticed that in the depiction today. Uh, there were two locations we were considering. One is close to where it is, uh, but that would be on the A Street side, over by the mudroom is where it would be. Or move it over by the pool equipment, which may be, you know, a better location. Yeah.
Okay, so anywhere, wherever you move it, it's well, uh, inside the five foot, uh, space that you need to be?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, when, when you do this project, are most of the pavers that exist now gonna be removed and, uh, just changed?
I think aesthetically, we'll likely change them, yes.
When you do that, would you be willing to make them pervious? I know it's not a, uh, you don't have a, an impervious issue here, but, um, there's quite a bit of coverage, and it would be really nice if you could do that. I don't think it would cost you that much more, if any, and, um, it would increase the, you'd get fifty percent credit on your, your paver coverage.
Go ahead.
I think, I think we've, we've considered that, and what we've, uh, chosen to preferably do is choose certain materials that are more pervious, like around the fire pit with gravel and, and certain other areas to make sure that we did that. I know that the pervious, um, paver systems are somewhat complex sometimes, but we would look at it in certain areas if, if that can help.
So, okay, so you don't wanna do that?
I, I think it's complex, uh, just from the structural and cost perspective, but I think what we've tried to do is actually put in other materials in certain areas to keep it down. But, yeah, but clearly, you know, we could look at that in certain areas, like alongside, uh, you know, going to the pool, we could put that section in, in, in that kind of a situation.
Oh, we're, we're gonna have new drives too.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, Mr. Greg, I think we can look at also, um, on the A Street side, where the new materials are gonna go in as well. You know, if we just did that side of the garage, that would have a significant impact.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm sorry, say, say that again, Bill, I cut out there.
Yeah, you know, I, I think without tearing everything up in the backyard completely, although there's an in-ground pool going in, certainly we're gonna be doing rearranging of the garage and replacing, uh, and, and improving. So I think the areas that we are putting new pavers down, we'd be willing to certainly, uh, consider doing, um, the pervious paver. And I guess I'd have to be playing with one layover, over another, but I think we'd try to have Mr. Kusheba.
And also Joe.
Give us some input on that, but it would, it would certainly be, um, you know, where, where the new, where the new garage is going, there's old pavers. So those pavers need to come out, and then new pavers need to go in in front of the new garage. So those are replaced with, uh, pervious, and then maybe we take out the other part of the existing driveway and put pervious pavers in there. We've probably, uh, forty, forty percent of our pavers, we've probably replaced. And then in the back by the in-ground pool.
That area.
The, uh, that would be the southwest.
Yes.
If we did that and pervious as well, we're probably more than fifty percent now pervious, and I think he would be certainly willing to do that. And maybe by the time he goes through the whole in-ground pool and the rest of it, he can figure it out.
All right, I, I'm almost sorry I asked.
So, I appreciate.
Sorry.
The issue would be, the, the issue would be that the pervious paver really wouldn't match the other pavers in the, on the lot. So if you didn't do, if you did not, not all of them, then you shouldn't do any, I guess, because you're gonna have mismatched pavers. This is gonna look nice, they all have to match. But, um, I'm not gonna ask again.
But if, look, there's new walks going in as well, so.
I think, I think Joe, I think Joe, Joe in the southwest corner, we were talking about using materials that were not pavers anyway, so I think that would become pervious.
Correct, we showed pavers throughout, but the, there was discussion of in the southwest corner going to more of a gravel type material. Uh, we can also, uh, you know, if you have sand joints between the pavers, they can also act, uh, somewhat as a, a pervious style. Uh, and as you're aware, the, the, the borough considers all pavers that are parked on as impervious regardless of, uh, of material.
I'm not sure, I, I, I don't, I don't know that I necessarily agree with that, but maybe it's true. Uh, as far as I know, impervious pavers are impervious, they're a hundred percent impervious, and pervious pavers, you get fifty percent coverage. Is that right, Ted?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, so, I mean, I just, it's, it looks to me like, well, by the time you do all this construction, you've damaged or, you know, or done some kind of destructive thing to the existing pavers almost on the whole lot, and you're gonna have to replace almost all of them. It would be really nice to do that. I, I just don't, honestly, I don't know the difference in the cost. I have seen it done. Um, it is a little bit more, I believe, but it would be nice to do that because it's a pretty sandy lot, I'm sure. I don't live that far away, and there's all sand in my lot, and it would, it would work well. So the base doesn't have to be that big, depending upon how pervious the base is. You know, it doesn't have to be that deep, but, um, I would appreciate it if you looked into it. That's all I'm asking.
Absolutely.
Okay. Living space above the garage, is gonna be a shower in that living space above the garage?
No.
Okay. And, uh, there is a clearance between the pavers and your property line of about a foot? It's hard to see on my print.
I'll, uh, ask Joe to speak to it over here.
By the, uh, by the driveway to the south?
I think anywhere you have pavers run up to the property line, you have to have a foot clearance, or maybe it's just driveways. I don't know, Ted, which, which way does that go? Can you run pavers right to the property line, Ted?
Yeah, they're supposed to, really, they're supposed to meet the setback. Patio's are, they're supposed to meet the three foot setback in the rear yard.
So these don't then?
Well, not on, not on the westerly. We're more than happy to pull that back and save the favors.
Okay. So when you're gonna do that, you'll meet the setback?
The westerly side is the only side that doesn't comply.
The westerly side, it looks like, depends on how thick our coping is. Uh, if our coping's a foot, we're not gonna meet that. If our coping's, uh, point five five, we do. Um, I think what we're trying to do is to meet your code and not pull the pool closer than ten. If need be, I suppose they could take a half a foot out of the width of the swimming pool and then pull the, pull the pavers out on the back there, and that would meet code.
Okay. We'll make that a stipulation then, or?
Say, say that again, Bill.
I believe typically the, the pool setback is measured to the water's edge, if I'm not mistaken, and the coping has been allowed to be in that setback. Is that, uh, correct, Ted?
Yes.
Uh, so the coping there, I don't believe is of concern, but we could certainly pull those pavers back if, uh, if the board felt it necessary.
Yeah, that's what I was previously saying before. If we pull the pavers from the coping to the, uh, to the westerly, uh, property line, we'll just pull, pull those out on that portion, we'll, we'll make the pavers meet that setback.
Okay, thank you.
We'll make them meet the setback everywhere, we'll save it.
On the westerly side, yes.
We could even do it on the southerly side to three feet.
Correct.
Are you, I just wanna make sure that we're agreeing to that, um, that you're pulling the pavers back off the, the property line on the, on the westerly and southerly side?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That actually, uh, I'm next up for questions. That actually addressed my biggest concern, that those pavers were right up to the, uh, property line, um, with what I guess is the neighbor's pool that probably does the same thing against your property. I, and the only other thing I'll, I'll just note is that it, it sounds like you're toying with, uh, extending the pool from twenty four to twenty eight feet. Obviously, that's not in the plan that we're looking at, but depending on how you expand that, would that come within ten feet of the adjacent dwelling?
No, it would be south, so no.
Okay, and, and by the plan, it, it, you're what, you're roughly thirteen feet away from the, the nearest point is thirteen feet away from the adjacent dwelling?
Uh, I believe you're correct, I can, I can check that.
Would you mind? I just, I just wanna make sure we're not allowing this pool to be within ten feet of an adjacent dwelling? I measured here to here.
You're correct, I'm, I'm coming up with about thirteen feet.
Okay. Okay, uh, I think that's it for me. Before I open it up to the public, Ted, uh, did we miss anything?
No, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
But if the, the pool, um, doesn't go by another structure on another piece of property, it goes by the property line. So you can't, you can't judge thirteen feet to somebody else's house. It goes by the principal structure. It, it says pools on the lot have to be at least ten feet from any structure. Doesn't say anything about neighboring structures.
So you're saying to me that, that measurement is ten feet from the principal structure on the subject lot, and we don't really concern ourselves with adjacent lots?
No, no.
Okay. Thanks, Ted, thanks for that clarification. All right, uh, did anybody else have other questions? All right, I am gonna open it up to, uh, public comment. Uh, April, do you, do you wanna run that portion of it?
Yes, if anyone from the public wants to comment on this application.
And April, for record, for record-keeping purposes, just recite your email one more time.
Clark@Belmar.com.
All right, so we'll close the public portion and open it back up to board comment, and we'll start with Mr. Malongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that was an excellent discussion. Answered a lot of points of garage drainage setbacks. Um, I'm really in favor of this application. I think it's gonna be a benefit to the area, and my, my vote is gonna be a yes.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I, um, I too am in favor of the application. I, I, I think it's a big building, but I don't see any, um, uh, there, there's no major variances or concerns with what's being proposed here, so I am in favor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Capoli.
I am also in favor of the application. Uh, if the house looks half as good as that rendering, it's gonna be beautiful, so good luck. I also am in favor of the application.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Fowler.
Based on the information that's been presented, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Schiper's succinct presentation, which I'm very pleased with, uh, I'm also encouraged at the fact that this gentleman and his lovely bride have decided at some point in time to make Belmar their primary residence. Uh, so based on all those criterias, I'm generally in favor of this application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Greig?
Uh, the only criticism I have right now would be on the rendering. Uh, it looks like they got an edge to the driveway a little better. Your landscaper didn't do a good job edging the driveway on the rendering. No, it looks like a good project, uh, it looks like a beautiful house. I wish you a lot of luck with, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
And I too am in favor of this application. I think it's gonna be fantastic. I appreciate you making the concessions that you did with the pavers. Uh, and with that, Mr. Kennedy, will you summarize, please?
Sure. Uh, if this application is going to be approved, we, we talked about, uh, a couple of, uh, conditions. Some are implied and, uh, we'll expli- explicitly state them. So compliance with all promises, commitments, and representations the development team made tonight. Compliance with any prevailing FEMA and Building and Construction Code regulations and Affordable Housing Regulations practices that the borough has. Uh, grading and drainage details to be, uh, reviewed and approved by the borough engineer. They generally have a twenty-four month timeframe, uh, within which certificates of occupancy to be issued or any agreed-upon extension. And, and Bill, just to confirm, we don't need any type of height variance, correct?
No.
Okay.
Longer than existing.
And then, I'm sorry?
The addition is shorter than the existing.
Okay. And then the, um, I think, uh, Mr. Koby, uh, Kusheba said that we're just gonna change the plans to, uh, confirm that the existing maximum, I'm sorry, existing, uh, lot coverage is fifty point five three, Joe?
Correct.
Okay, and so, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think there was a, was there? And so, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think there was a, was there a discussion that utilities will, you know, utilize good faith efforts to place utilities underground?
Ground.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, and then we'll just, we also have the, uh, you know, if it's feasible and practical and we'll have the, uh, an obligation that they report back to the board secretary so that she can tell us. Now, was there something about, uh, if there are yard drains, the details to be reviewed, approved by the borough engineer essentially? I think Joe was that?
Yes, that's I.
Okay. And then I think we talked about the, um, the, the bonus room is, uh, I think Chris Rice indicated it's not to be utilized as a bedroom or a sleeping area. All right. And we are going to clarify that, uh, to the extent necessary, the applicant is also asking for a variance. If the, uh, converting the porch to a room triggers a, a front setback variance, I mean, it might be, uh, 20 feet required versus 14.5 feet proposed, but when we analyze, as we do in Belmar, the average setback, it might be that no variance is necessary, but Mr. Shipers, out in the bonus of caution, the necessary and to avoid any future problems, we want the application amended to include that variance if necessary.
Correct.
Okay. And then we're getting towards the end here. We said something, oh, the generator on the slate, uh, the generator is going to be relocated to a zoning compliant location. Now with the pavers, we're taking out the part about making them impervious pavers, but, um, and then I think we sort of changed it to say, um, pull the pavers back from the coping to the western property line so that there's a minimum three foot distance between the, the, uh, property line and the pavers, was that it, Mr. Lisco?
Uh, that's it, man, that also worked to the south, uh, the southern property line as well.
So that's on the western side and, and the southern side.
Agreed.
Okay. And then, um, uh, did we say, say, uh, no living space above the garage?
Not no living space.
No bedding, okay, and we already talked about that, okay? And then, um, I think, Mr. Lisco, you just wanted confirmation that the pool will not be located within 10 feet of the property.
Uh, well, we can, uh, no, we can, we can take that discussion out.
Not with the property line Kevin, from the house, it's 10 foot compliant away from our structure. I agree with Ted and, uh, you know, that's where it lies, it lies 10 feet from the,
So we don't need to put anything in there, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe.
That's correct Kevin, nothing's needed on that.
Okay, so, uh, Billy, you heard those conditions, are you and your client okay with those conditions?
Yes, yes, we are. Now, just, you know, to be certain, we're going to make best efforts to, to, to look at the electric, to make, to see if it's, uh, financially feasible. We, you know, we're not, we're not looking to do a $50,000 under the ground street to move it, but if the fees are reasonable, we, then they're, they're, uh, soundly within our budget, we're more than happy to, to look to do it if they're reasonable.
Mr. Chairman, that, that seems to be consistent with, uh, I interpreted the board condition to be, would that be your understanding as well? Yes, it is, although I don't know how we would define reasonable. Is, is there any type of definition on that?
Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll put some language in that Mr. Shipers and I will work out, but we basically say, you know, good faith efforts considering the willingness of the utility companies and cost and, uh, practicality and all, all those types of things. So I, I, I think we'll put together a pretty good language that everybody will be happy with.
Excellent, thanks, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, so if that's acceptable, we can go do a vote.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the application as summarized by Mr. Kennedy?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I think we had Mr. Greig first and then was that Mr. Malongo second?
Correct.
All right.
We have Mr. Fowler?
Yes, I'm in favor of the application.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Malongo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Greg? Mr. Lisco?
Yes. Well, congratulations, your application is approved. We wish you luck.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you everyone, great meeting.
All right, the time is 7:21, I need a four minute break. Let's start back up at 7:25.
Okay.
All right, April. All right, we're back on. We're up to our second application of the night, oh, I'm sorry. Do you need to take roll call again?
I'm sure, we can do that. Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Malongo?
Here.
Capoli?
Here.
Greig?
He's here, I just muted him. I'm here as well. All right, thanks everybody. Uh, we're up to our second application of the night for Lisa Marino and Harry, Harold Footali at 206 12th Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and as the, um, I'm going to ask momentarily, if anyone has any questions regarding the sufficiency of the notice and if they do, they can raise their computer, uh, screens, uh, or they can contact Borough Clerk and April, your email address is?
Clark@Belmar.com.
Okay, so what we're going to do is-
Kevin, if I could just interrupt you for one second, if I could just remind everybody to mute your own phone if you're not talking, uh, we're hearing an echo, it would be very helpful, thank you.
Okay, and what we will do is we will swear in our, uh, good friend Ted Bianchi tonight for the second time. Ted, you are the zoning officer and construction official for the Borough of Belmar. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you providing, will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, let the record reflect, the witness has been sworn and what we will do is mark into the record what we as a board have before us. A1 is the application package and A2 is the, uh, Belmar application site plan checklist. A3 is the Borough of Belmar Minor Land use certificate slash zoning permit and that is dated April 7, 2020 and April 6, 2020. And, uh, we're going to mark as A4 is a, uh, basically it's a, an addendum, just, uh, amended variance requested April 9, 2020. A5, uh, we're going to mark as, uh, April, this came in as separate mailing from you. This is, uh, well, I think we just, let me see, that first one. All right, so that supersedes, all right. We have in here an amendment to a prior submission of April 3rd, so let's just mark that as A5, I'm sorry, A, we have to five April?
Yes.
Okay, mark that as A5 and we can get some clarification on this from Mr. Shipers momentarily, just so we're all looking at the same thing. A6 is, um, survey of property prepared by Morgan Engineering and that is dated, looks like April 24th, 2019. And then A7 will be the floor plans and elevations. We'll get some clarification on that as to, by whom they were prepared. So that's A7 and A8 is the plot plan prepared by, uh, KBA Engineering Services and that's dated April 1st, 2020, consisting of one sheet. And, let's see.
Kevin? Kevin?
Yep.
Kevin?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Shipers here, did I hear you mark the KBA engineering plan?
Oh, was that wrong? Okay, so A8, knock that out, sorry, that's from our last application. So A8, thank you, Mr. Shipers, will be, um, plans prepared by, uh, Morgan Engineering. Actually, this is just a big copy of what we previously marked, so we don't, so there's nothing marked as A8. So that having been said, uh, April, has anyone come in, uh, any emails or, uh, computer arms raised in the air for questions on the notice?
No.
All right.
Kevin, if I can help you out?
Sure.
I have in the call next to me also, uh, helping take notes. I believe the amended submission here is April 3rd, 20, and I think you referenced the Frankins, did you not?
The submission here is, the amendment is here is July 14th.
All right, my amendment here is July 14th of 20.
The Frankin one was amended on April 1.
And I think you, you had the Frankin one you had referenced. I think I, I got out of the line with you Kevin at A4, could you request, could you repeat what your A4 is?
Sure. So A4, I have an amended, you know what? That says Frankin, I'm sorry, so let's start this again, so sorry about that. A1 is the development application package. And A2 is the application checklist. A3 is the, um, minor land use zoning certificate. All right, and then we're going to say, A4 will be the plans prepared by, uh, Morgan, so that's A4. Morgan Engineering and that includes, uh, a survey and includes the floor plans and elevations, so that's collectively A4. Then is there anything else that we need to?
There, there was, there was an amendment of the original application, Kevin, on July 14th, 2020, wherein we amended and made the application smaller and more compliant. That should be A5 and then there's a rendering that should be A6.
All right.
And then, and if you don't have, depending, depending on what you have with your amendment, we submitted an amended plan on 11 by 17s, our original submission plans were two foot by three foot. So we should all be looking at the 11 by 17 plan and we should be looking at the July 14th, 20, amendment there too. The Fidellis had scaled back the, the scope and breadth of their application pre notification and then we noticed and mailed with the new amended criteria.
Okay, and then just so I know, uh, Bill and Nicole, I'm looking at, uh, something that says, uh, amendment to prior submission of April 3rd, 2020.
Yes.
So that's the, what I should be looking at, correct?
Correct, so what that is, the prior submission was April 3, 20, when we submitted the two by three plan and drawing, the Fidellis chose to scale back redesign, they did so promptly and on July 14th, 20, I submitted the amended plans, they are on 11 by 17 sheets, not two by threes, and we published prior to 10 days and mailed prior to 10 days, the amended criteria set forth in my July 14, 20 submission.
So, A5 supersedes and A7 supersedes, uh, those documents that were previously submitted?
I'm not sure what A7 is, uh, we didn't get back to that when you were recapitulating.
Okay.
I got, I got up to A4 was all the Morgan plans, now it is still Morgan plans, but if those were the first Morgan plans- or the Nastasi plans is the architect. Those are the plans that have been amended down.
Got it.
I'm just not sure what we're referring to, the 11 by 17 passage. Yeah, the, the 7, 14, 20, 20. I know they're dated that, but they're-
I had the 11 seven by 17 as A7, is that?
A7?
Yes.
All right, that works for me as long as I know what I'm calling them.
And then A6 was the rendering and then, um, okay, so thank you for that and I apologize. And then just, for the record, uh, April, has anyone, um, asked to speak or emailed about notice?
No.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, for the record, uh, the board secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so it'd be my opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed.
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy, yeah, welcome, Mr. Shipers.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lisco, uh, on behalf of, uh, Mrs. Fidali, but Marino, Mr. Fidali, ladies and gentlemen, board members and chairman, for the record, William Shipers, Shammy Shipers, Amontski, Belmar and the Sprungut, on behalf of, um, the applicant, I am going to have this evening, and would ask to be sworn, John Nastasi, architect, I'd also like to swear Harold Fidali, Lisa Marina, Lisa Marino Fidali, uh, and Nick Fidali is out there also, he is with, with Nastasi Architects, he is not a licensed architect as of yet, but he's, we graduated architect school and he may put in a couple of two cents or not.
All right, if I could have all those, uh, people read, please raise their right hand and then, uh, just Mr. Nastaski, start with you, state your name and spell your last name.
John Nastasi, N-A-S-T-A-S-I.
All right, Mr. Fidali Howard?
Harold, you have to unmute.
Mr. Fidali, can you hear me?
I can now, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem, just state your name for the, uh, record and spell your last name.
Yep, Harold Fudali, F as in Frank, U D as in David, A-L-I.
Okay, and we have Lisa Marino?
Lisa Marino Fudali.
Okay. Okay, and we have Nick Fidali somewhere?
Nick Fidali, F-U-D-A-L-I.
All right, if you all could raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
I do.
All right, let the record reflect that all four witnesses have been sworn.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kennedy, brief, uh, introduction. I want to first thank the Fidellis for giving me the honor and privilege of representing them through this evening and this evening before the board. I want to call out a little bit Lisa Marino Fidali, before she had the good fortune of, uh, meeting Harold. Lisa has been a Belmar, uh, resident for many, many years and comes from a family of great public service. I believe the Fidellis are either now or going to be making this their, uh, principal home. I have known Harold for many, many years, he's a great man of great character, great intellect, great talent, welcome him to Belmar with open arms, I'm so happy Harold's down here. They're also on 12th Avenue, so I look forward to 12th Avenue in the future. Do not know Nick, but if he's a cut of mom and dad, he's a, going to be a wonderful architect and young man. It's great to see what they're proposing. They first purchased this home. You'll get a little of this history briefly from Lisa and or Harold. They purchased this home, made improvements to it. But now it's time to really make it home and some great improvements. They're preserving the streetscape. They're preserving the character of the home. But Architect Nastasi has done some wonderful thinking. I don't know if it's all his mindset or young Fidali helping him. Or credit gets where credit is due somewhere near a little bit. But Architect Nastasi's come up with a beautiful plan and a beautiful addition. I'm just going to submit that they had some really interesting ideas previously. But after discussions amongst themselves, I think some discussion with myself and with the architects, he tailored back the extent and the scope of the application. And I submit to you this evening, without talking too much, because I want to do this in an hour, not an hour and 24 minutes. I'm trying to reform myself and break some records. The only variance is that I'm seeking on their behalf this evening is their lot area is 7,000 pre-existing non-conformity, the 7,500 square foot zone. They have the minimus 18.8 front yard setback where 20 is required existing non-conformity. They have a side yard existing setback of 3.5 feet where five is required. Now, the reason that that's going to be continuing variance, as Ted would explain, I think, is that they are squaring off the rear of their house and just continuing the 3.5 foot setbacks. So by the additional squaring off of the rear, and it's really two parcels on each side of what I call, this looks like a stove pot, stovepipe house hat to me, they pick up that variance. Otherwise, it is a two-story home with a 30-foot height. Imagine that, that I come before the board for one of those. Also, no far, impervious, that does not require a variance. But they have a bit building coverage, existing 27.7, a whopping 30.1. So unfortunately, these poor people have to engage me, pay me to present a beautiful plan and ask for 3% of building coverage. So with that, it's a wonderful plan. You're all very capable. I'm going to call on Architect Nastasi to lay out his design, his, his chore or retention. I'm going to ask him about materials, siding, roof, decks, railings, air conditioning, water coming off the house. And then I'm going to turn them over to you for any further questions. So without further ado, I'd like John Nastasi, not necessarily to step forward, but speak forward. I'm going to call him as my first witness. You ready, John?
I'm here.
Okay. All right. So for the record, we're creating a record, even though we're somewhat in informal fashion. This is being recorded on our tape. I would like you, John, to lay out your licensing, your brief history of your education, your CV, your experience with homes and renovations, testifying before boards.
Okay. I'll be as brief as possible. My name is John Nastasi. I'm in my own practice in architecture for 30 years in Hoboken, New Jersey. I'm licensed in New York and New Jersey. I've done residential work throughout New Jersey, throughout New York, Eastern Long Island, Dallas, Venice Beach, California, Los Angeles. And I've presented at boards throughout New Jersey, including Seagirt and Spring Lake. I have two degrees in architecture, a bachelor, a bachelor of architecture from Pratt Institute in Brooklyn. And I have a master's in design from Harvard University. And I've been a professor of architecture for 30 years as well.
Mr. Chairman, I think that leaps our bar. And I would move that Mr. Nastasi be qualified as an expert in architecture.
Except those credentials, welcome, Mr. Nastasi.
Thank you very much. Okay. So I, in order for me to begin, I would, I would ask if, I know we went through painstakingly the, the, the displays that we have, and we're up to A7. I would ask that I present a PDF and share my screen, and we would call that A8, if that's okay with the board.
All right. So we're going to mark it as A8. And what is A8 officially?
It's a PDF of the presentation that I will give. And then we can distribute this throughout the board.
Oh, good. Thank you.
So if I could share the screen? I don't seem to have an option to do that right now.
No, we don't have that set up.
Okay.
Yeah, exhibits have to be sent in ahead of time.
Okay. So then we're going to do.
All right. So we're going to, we're going to not mark that as A8, but we will improvise.
Yeah, we'll have to improvise. And I will, I'll work off of my, I'll work off of my drawings or the set of drawings that you guys have, which I think you're referring to as the 11 17 set, which is, which is A7.
Correct.
Okay. So if I go through this set, we can start, if we go to the second sheet, which is G101. Is everybody there?
Yes.
Okay. The way we're looking at is the lot, the plot plan for the Fidali residence. And to summarize what we're proposing, we look at the, the existing condition on the left, where you see you have a small two-story cottage with a wraparound front porch and a small rear porch. And to the right, we have the proposed lot coverage, where we're simply squaring off the back of the house. So in other words, the right side of the house is the east side. We're continuing that face to the back. We're coming across the back even with the rear porch. And then we're taking the west side of the house and continuing that to the back. So instead of having a bunch of ins and outs on the back of the house, which I think practically creates problems in the floor plan, we're simply squaring off the back of the house to make a very modest cleaning up of the back of the Fidali residence in a two-story, in the two-story residence. If you jump ahead to A100, and that would be the, the 1, 2, 3, the fourth sheet. What you're looking at again is the existing plans of the house. And if you look at the existing first floor plan, what I was brought in by the Fidellis to work on is really the back of the house. Once the Fidellis decided to move permanently into this house and not use it anymore just as a seasonal house, the existing kitchen and dining area needed to be revisited. So we needed to expand that back part of the house. And you could see in the floor plan, the existing first floor plan, that the setbacks and the jogs in this first floor plan created a spatial problem for the kitchen. If you jump ahead to A101, which is the next sheet. Is everybody there?
We are.
Okay. Once we square off the back of the house, you could see we get more reasonably spaced kitchen, living room, rear porch. And now this is the, I, this is a layout that I think the family can settle into in a more comfortable way. At no point does the east setback, the west setback, or the north setback decrease, because we're simply squaring off with the existing dimensions. Nor on the second floor are we adding bedrooms. We're simply giving some more square footage to the Fidellis on both the first floor and the second floor. I have some metrics from my presentation that I can just sort of help you put things in perspective. The existing lot coverage is 27.7%. Nick Fidali, who works in my office, tells me that the proposed lot coverage is 30.1%. So we're going from 27.7% to 30.1%. So all we're really adding is 178 square feet per floor. So this is a super modest expansion, but it's more about making the rear of the house a little bit more functional, a little bit more usable. If you go to sheet A200, you see the drafted elevations of the home. And you can see from these drawings that the house maintains its cottage architectural character. It never loses its two-story scale. The wraparound porch at the street stays, the columns, the overhangs. So the house is not really changing on the streetscape. And I know that you guys have a rendering of the house. And that's probably the rendering from the street. And in that rendering, you can see that the scale and character of the house is intact, as are the setbacks for the property. Technically, we're using maintenance-free materials, such as the things you would expect, sort of AZEC trim boards and composite panels for siding, timberline, new timberline roofs. We're collecting rainwater. We're doing rainwater calculations so that if, if a dry well or a seepage pit is needed, we'll certainly put a seepage pit or dry well in the rear of the house. It's important to note that the Fidellis during a previous renovation have installed pervious pavers throughout the property. So it's sort of a textbook case of perviousness. So when it rains, the rain hits the pervious pavers and just sort of does what it's expected to do, which is completely absorb the rainwater. So you don't get flooding and puddling and runoff to the neighbor's house. I think, other than that, I think that's, that's pretty much the application, and that's why we're here tonight.
Mr. Nastasi, I'd ask you to comment on where you propose to locate the AC condensers on the new proposed home. I.
The existing compressor is on the, in the small side yard setback on the west side of the house. Harold Fidali, my client, has talked with his neighbor to the west. And the thinking is that the Fidellis will put the compressor on the west side of the house and work at a location that is amenable, amenable to the neighbor. And the, based on Harold's conversations, that did not seem to be an issue with the neighbor at all.
You understand, though, that you cannot put it in a five-yard setback to the west without variance relief?
Correct. I understand that.
Okay. How utilities, you're not changing any utilities and existing services in the existing house, is that correct?
Yes, correct. The existing electric service comes from across 12th on the east, the east corner across the street. And across the street, a diagonal mounts to the front of the house. We will look into the feasibility of trenching under the street, the, the cost implications, the feasibility. And if, if we can get that wire buried under the street in some sort of reasonable cost, we would consider it. But our intention initially is to leave the electric service mounted on the front of the house.
You also have electric wires coming. You have a double problem. You have electrical wires coming from the, across the street on a southeast diagonal. You also have them coming across the street from the northwest on a diagonal to service.
Right. From the west, I believe it's the cable. And from the east, it's the, it's the electric service for the home, correct?
So it would affect if we were trying to make it a standalone, no wire is going to this house, it's a double, double impact or almost a double trench, is that correct?
Exactly. Yes. Two different poles, one in the east, one in the west, correct?
Okay. Let's see, you're not increasing, or your, I'm sorry, your existing height is 23, I believe, nine, you're increasing to 35 or 30 where 35 is allowed, correct?
We're increasing to 30 where 35 is allowed.
And you're maintaining a two-story, not two and a half story, living space throughout, correct?
It's a two-story cottage, yes.
All right. And we're not changing the number of bedrooms, right? We're just making them more commodious, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
All right. And with that, I'm probably, when I look at your first floor proposed kitchen and living room and island, I'm just wondering how I get an invitation for Sunday sauce? Marino Fidali, that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Shipers. Was that it?
You know what? That is it.
All right. All right. We're going to open it right up to board questions. We'll go back to Mr. Malongo.
Evening, everyone. As I, I guess I'll be repeating myself this evening. I think this is a nice design. It's not going over too much percentages. I did hear the architect, John, say if the engineer requires a drainage pit, that will happen?
Correct.
And it looks like the railings on the buildings are the same size. We have a 42-inch railings at the top and 36 at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Malongo. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Hey, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have lot coverage, I got that. What else was there? I was trying to track this, but I'm having trouble tonight for some reason. I've got a lot of papers in front of me. So besides the variance for lot coverage, what are we approving?
You're approving, other than lot coverage, all you're approving are four pre-existing non-conformities. Lot size 7,500 where 7,000 is provided. Front yard setback 20 foot where 18.8 currently exists. The only one of, and I'll call it minor, I think, of impact is the existing 3.5 five-yard or five-foot setback requirement where 3.5 is provided, is extended. As Architect Nastasi explained, he squares off the westerly portion of the rear of the main residence. So because we're extending that line, it's a 3.5 conformity, we're continuing the non-conformity as opposed to bumping it into five feet.
Most of it's current. Most of it is existing, and you just need to get it formalized because there's a change happening here. Okay, I get it. And Neil, I just have one comment, and really not a question, but if you can bury the wire, you know, it's hard to go back and do that a second time. So I, I'd really encourage you, even if it's at decent expense, it's a permanent change that I think you'll be happier with. Because when you spend this kind of money to renovate a house and you still have that ugly wire, you know, come through aerial. I did it when I built my house, and I'm so glad that we buried it. And I'd really recommend that you bury it. It's not a condition of the application, but I just want to encourage you to do that.
I don't disagree with you for all the reasons that you explained.
We would be willing to agree with Mr. Kennedy's language that he proposed for the last application, that we would look into it. And as long as it's not cost prohibitive, we'd certainly consider it.
Thank God, nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Capoli.
Yes, I only have one or two small questions. Pool equipment, where are we going to locate that? I don't, I don't see that on the drawings. We need to locate the pool equipment. And I noticed the garage has an air conditioner, is that correct? Is that a living space or I don't recall what it was?
All right. So Harold, if you can answer.
Garage question, I'm unfamiliar with that. Yeah, no, that's fine. Hi, everybody, and thank you for your time tonight. So for the pool supplies that you mentioned, on the, on the garage along the side of the pool, there's a door there, and that's where the pool supplies already go. So there's a ready space for it.
Okay. And that, is that a garage? I see an AC unit there and.
There is. And there's, there is a, call it a living space, based upon what I heard on the prior piece. But it's really kind of like a playroom. It's an area where the kids can go and kind of play TV and, you know, video games, Xbox, that type of stuff. It's really kind of a, it's a hanging out type of room.
Is there a bathroom in that facility?
There is, but that was part of the original plans that were submitted when we did that renovation.
Okay. Good luck with the underground. I hope that works out as, as Mr. Shipers. As, as Mr. Shipers knows, it's one of the things I always look for. And he always addresses it pretty good. That's the only other questions I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli. Mr. Fowler, you're up next.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Both, most of my questions have been answered, I'm just curious, is there a Generac on the property?
There is not.
Okay, are you anticipating putting one on as a backup?
I would definitely like to do so. We have not kind of really thought about that as part of this piece. But having owned the house here during Hurricane Sandy.
Understandably.
Yes, I definitely understand the benefits and the value of it, but we just haven't had an opportunity to really consider it at this point.
Yeah, location would be a consideration as well, obviously. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Greg.
I got a couple of questions, not too much, though. For Ted, I've never seen this before, I believe it says it's a covered in-ground pool. Well, I'm not asking Ted that, I asked the homeowners, is your pool covered?
No, I don't know, I don't know what that's referring to. It's actually, it's a fiberglass pool.
Maybe it says COV period, maybe it means something else, it just, I read it as covered.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that may be referring to.
I could jump in, when I was surveyed, it was covered.
I couldn't hear.
When I was surveyed, it was covered for the.
Oh, okay, thank, so it's not covered now?
No.
Okay. And on the G100, it notes that the impervious coverage is 28.8%. It's now going to be 29%. But I'm looking at the print, I find it almost hard to believe. It looks like almost everything on the property is covered by something impervious with very little exception. That's showing almost like one quarter of this property should be covered. And it looks like seven, eight tenths of it is covered. Can somebody clarify that?
As I testified, the Fidalis under a previous application purchased and installed pervious pavers throughout their properties. So they're, they're one of the early adopters of pervious pavers. And then with pervious pavers, you get 50% credit for that square footage.
So I mean, you've calculated that and that is accurate?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greg. I only have one question. I think I heard you testify that you're going to put the AC condenser in the side yard setback to the west of the house. Is there another location that that can go?
I think we can, we can work it out to get it somewhere in the rear of the property, and maybe out of the side yard. There is some room, we can find a place to get it out of this side yard.
All right, excellent. So you'll put it in a code compliant location, and then you're not requesting a variance for the AC unit?
Correct.
That was all I had. Did anybody have anything, or Ted, did, did, do we miss anything?
No, I don't think so.
All right, I don't see anybody raising their hand, so we'll open it up to public comment. And April, if you want to take it away on that.
Anyone from the public would like to comment on this application, please click the raise hand button.
And just for the record, it would be either comment or ask questions of any of the witnesses. And April, why don't you just read your email one more time?
clerk@belmar.com.
Mr. Chairman, before this pandemic ends, April, April's going to hit me for, keep asking her to recite that.
I've heard it enough.
If we're in a remote, if we're in a remote setting, she can't hit me, so I'm safe.
All right, nobody's raising their hand.
Thanks, April. We'll close the public portion and open it back up to board comment. Back to you, Mr. Malongo.
As I said before, can you hear me?
Yes, we have you.
As I said before, I think it's a nice design, and it would fit in the neighborhood, and I would be in favor of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Malongo. Mr. Fitzgerald.
In favor of the application, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Capoli.
I am also in favor of the application. I'd like to welcome you to the town. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm equally as delighted and pleased when someone comes before us under the premise of making it a primary residence. We encourage you, and we're certainly looking forward to that. Based on the information and the succinct information that's been presented by Mr. Shipers, thank you again for that. I'm very much in favor of this application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Greg.
It looks like a good application to me, I intend on voting for it.
And I too am in favor of the application. I would also like to compliment you on your fourth site to use the pervious pavers. Because looking at these plans, what a difference pervious pavers make for the application and the impervious coverage. So thank you for doing that earlier, and it's my pleasure to approve this application. With that, Mr. Kennedy, will you summarize?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if this application is to be approved, some of the potential conditions of approval would include compliance with all the promises and commitments and representations. The applicant's development team may tonight comply, obviously with all prevailing building and construction code regulations, grading and drainage details to be reviewed and approved by the borough engineer. To comply with the Affordable Housing Rules Regulations Directive contributions as required by the borough. Compliance with all outside approvals. We generally have a 24-month timeframe within which they obtain a certificate of occupancy. 24 months are already agreed upon extension. And then some of the other things that we talked about tonight. So, Mr. Shipers, there's no height variance per se of actual physical height, correct?
No height.
Okay. And we are just going to clarify for the beginning conversations that the A5 and A7 amended plans supersede. And that's what's being approved. And we also talked about the possibility in conjunction with those grading and drainage details, whether it's a dry well or seepage pit, if necessary, the applicants will be required to work that out to the satisfaction of the borough engineer. And I think, Mr. Chairman, we also have usually a standard condition that if any of those improvements are required, that they're going to be installed and maintained in accordance with prevailing industry and manufacturing standards. The air conditioning condenser is going to be placed in a zoning compliant location. Good faith efforts to put the utilities underground, again, considering such things as cost, legality, approval from the utility companies. And again, we'll work on that language, but good faith and the reported obligation for them to report back to us periodically so that we can keep track of, again, getting way beyond the application. We sometimes have this application, and I think at one of our, I mean, have this discussion at one of our annual review that we have, maybe April can compile all the responses. We can sort of see where, what those results have been. But going back on this, let's see, we are, all right, pool equipment we talked about. And I think that was it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. With that, can I have a motion to approve the application as summarized by Mr. Kennedy?
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Capoli.
I'll second it.
And who said that, was that Mr. Fowler?
That was Mr. Fowler, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
All right, Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Malongo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes. With that, the application is approved. I would like to congratulate the applicant, and I would like to congratulate Mr. Shipers for a 43-minute application.
Thank you.
We could use more of those.
Unexpected again.
Hey, if I, the applicant is all through, and if I could ask the board members just to stay on, we have a little bit of business to take care of going through the past resolutions.
And you know what, hey, Bill?
It's terrific, thank you, everyone.
Thank you all, thank you for your time.
Congratulations, good luck again.
Thank you.
Very much.
All right, everybody still here?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go through the three resolutions that we have. The first resolution is for approving the application of Corin and Dawn Miller at 1701 Surf Avenue. Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything on that?
I do, Mr. Chairman, this one, I'm going to have to ask for a little bit of board direction on this one. This was a fairly complicated matter, and my notes were sort of all over the place. So I just want to, if you could help me confirm that this was essentially an approval to, a request to install, I mean, approve certain improvements to an existing single-family dwelling. And basically, it was the seven-foot by seven-foot hot tub, but it was also replacing the existing garage roof. And it got a little complicated because, number one, that garage roof is currently right on the property line. And then there was also the whole discussion about putting the air conditioning condenser. First, they were going to put it on the top of the roof of the garage, inside the garage. And there was confusion as to whether or not that was, would pass cover muster. So I just wanted to confirm, my recollection is a little bit different from April's recollection, and my notes were all over the place because we had had so many changing scenarios. So, Mr. Chairman, just so that I can just be sure, was it the recollection that the air conditioning was going to be placed on the roof, or were we going to have it relocated?
I thought the applicant said that they were going to leave it either inside the interior of the garage, if they could prove that that was going to be acceptable, or they were going to put it on the roof behind some sort of enclosure, so it wasn't visible from the street.
Okay, so inside the interior of the roof of the garage, provided that complies with all building and construction code, or on top of the roof in a camouflage fashion.
That's correct. And maybe not saying on top of the roof, it was, it was, I go, I guess it was. Yeah, it was in a cutout or something, it was not well-defined. But what we wanted to, I think what most people were concerned with is that they had some sort of option to put it outside where I think most of the board members thought it belonged, and that it was camouflaged from the, from the street and the neighbors.
And then.
And, Mr. Kennedy, one clarification on that. It was not only installed in, inside code compliant fire, et cetera, but, but the manufact, the applicant had to prove, the manufacturer approves the condenser for inside usage. That was really what we spent a lot of time on, is that, is that a belief that there really is no such condenser? But if he finds one, the condenser will have to be rated for internal use.
Got it, thank you, and we'll definitely make sure of that. And that was, okay, and then, so just going on in terms of the, just the only findings of fact that I wanted to just sort of bring to your attention was I put in here, basically it said per, because remember, this, like I said, the garage roof goes over, or goes right up to the property line, and they're replacing the roof. And I think Mr. Ross particularly was like, you know, hey, make sure you can't have an overhang. So anyway, we said, per the on-the-record discussion, the board representatives advised the applicants that the zoning board has no power or authority to allow a garage structure or the roof of the garage structure or roof overhang to be installed or constructed on property of a third party. Thus, the applicants were highly encouraged to obtain an as-built survey and review the matter with the affected neighbors and the applicant's own real estate representatives, surveyors, et cetera, and any other design professionals. Moreover, the applicants were advised that if the information and as-built survey revealed the survey encroachment relative to that new pitched garage roof, then in that event, the applicants would need to return to the zoning board on notice so as to obtain additional clarifying, modifying relief. And then, and certainly no guarantees were issued or promised with respect to any such future applications. And then, in terms of the conditions of note, where the hot tub, obviously, for individual residential use and the inclusion of, you know, plan revisions that the additional landscaping, planting, and trees shall buffer the hot tub from the adjacent property owners, and that those details will be reviewed and approved by the borough engineer. They're also going to place a fence around that hot tub to serve as a further visual and noise buffer. And I think it was the planting trees and hedgerows and fence to be perpetually repaired, replaced, and replanted as necessary. We talked about those air conditioning. And then we also talked about a note confirming that the applicants shall install a cricket wall with some type of catch basin so as to improve the overall stormwater management. Again, the details need to be reviewed and approved by the borough engineer. The improvements will need to be appropriately fire-rated, subject to the very excellent clarifications that Mr. Fitzgerald just made. We're having them correct the plans, because I think they had the incorrect garage setback. They said it was three feet, but it's really five feet. And they're going to comply with all the separation and clearance requirements as required per prevailing building and construction code requirements. They're going to put gutters and leaders and have them pitched to the west, and that the downspats to the same will be directed to the concrete driveway. We also wanted them to revise the plans so as to confirm that there's only one driveway at the side. I think their plan sort of said there was another driveway, but that really wasn't anything that we thought was a really accurate description. And we talked about those air conditioning. And also, I put in here, just to avoid any confusion, they just need to revise the plans and clarify them to address all these conditions. Because, you know, two months from now, let alone two years from now, we're not going to remember all this. And we also said that the, a note confirming that the replacement garage roof cannot extend over or onto the adjacent property unless they have, the applicants have the consent of that other property owner. And, okay, and I think that was it, Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate that was, I needed your help on that, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as we discussed? I guess to waive the reading and approve the resolution as we just discussed for Corin and Dawn Miller at 1701 Surf Avenue.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Malongo, and a second?
I'll second it, it's Mark.
Thanks, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay, so we got, Mr. Fowler?
I wasn't available for that one, right? So I have to abstain?
Correct.
Okay, abstain.
Mr. Capoli?
I also must sustain, that was last week and last month, is that not correct?
Not last week, it was last month.
That was the July 23rd meeting, or no?
No, it was the June meeting.
I am in favor, yes.
Mr. Malongo?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
I'm staying.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes. All right. Next up is the resolution approving the application of Robert Truesdale at 319 10th Avenue.
All right, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, that was the application to approve demolition of what was at one point a three-family structure and construction of a new single-family home. They need variance relief, and obviously, as you all quite eloquently stated, I put a lot of findings in here in the resolution about the fact that as a condition, they, and to the extent it has not already been effectuated, they were abandoning any pre-existing non-conforming use. And certainly reducing the intensity and density from the three families to the one family certainly was a very important reason as to why a lot of the variances were granted. And I think the only finding that I really wanted to point out to you and just make sure that you're okay with this, I wrote in here that the application as presented requires a variance for the number of off-street parking spaces. Two spaces exist, three are required, and two spaces are proposed. And we basically said we critically reviewed that parking relief because understandably, off-street parking is important for those of us in Belmar. And we then went on to say there is a significant on-the-record discussion regarding the parking situation and the applicant's ability to potentially add additional parking spaces on that site. Though the board would appreciate a conforming parking proposal, and though the board appreciates the applicant's efforts to address the situation, the applicant's in-meeting design efforts or in-meeting design alternatives seemed a little impractical and would ultimately require approval for additional variances, including a variance for the number of driveways at the site. So the board members determined that the proposed modifications, as before said, relative to that second driveway, would be more impactful and more detrimental to the site and zone. And thus, we have approved the parking variance. And we've also said, by the way, the three-family home had a much more intense parking. And we've also said, by the way, the three-family home had a much more intense parking requirement than the single-family home. And so I just wanted to point that out. And in terms of conditions, air conditioning condenser to be located in zoning compliant location, good faith efforts to ensure that the utilities can be placed underground if possible, garage not to be utilized as living space, no utility service to the garage except electrical, gutters and leaders to be included. They'll include a dry well or some other type of stormwater management improvement system, the details of which need to be approved by the borough engineer. And again, those dry well, dry well or other improvement needs to be installed and maintained in accordance with prevailing manufacturing standards. And then the big one here is, to the extent necessary and to the extent it's not already been completed, the applicant knowingly, perpetually and permanently abandons any pre-existing non-conforming use rights which may have existed. So, Mr. Chairman, if that's acceptable, that can be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. All right, can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution for Robert Trusdale at 319 10th Avenue as we just discussed?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Malengo.
Okay, Mr. Fowler?
Abstain.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Malengo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Abstain.
Mr. Lisco?
Yes. All right, that brings us up to the next one, the resolution reaffirming the zoning officer's decision for 1905 Surf Avenue.
All right, Mr. Chairman, this this application, as you know, was a fairly intensely presented application dealing with an appeal. I apologize for getting it, the resolution to you, that I didn't get it earlier. But I tried to do as thorough a job as possible in terms of detailing every single element that the appellant's presented and every single element that the objectors presented. And I tried to give, just as you all have done, it was a split decision, you recall. But I tried to say, you know, that those who wanted to affirm the decision, they relied on A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. And those who wanted to reverse the decision of the zoning officer, those people were more inclined to rely on E, F, P, H, and I. And I basically said, at the end of the day, it was just those people who voted to affirm the decision just did not feel that the applicants had satisfied or met, the appellant's had met the burden of overturning the decision. And I did put a lot of points in there about, we know this is a tough situation. We know it was a personal situation. And we know it's a tough situation to prove in terms of, because we're going back from, you know, 25 and 30 years on some of the things, and there was some pretty inconsistent testimony. And I don't want to say inaccurate testimony or, but it was just some people saw different things, saw different things, witnessed different things, which is what, you know, makes it makes it difficult. So based upon that, and I also had a little chapter on there about the the fact that, you know, there was a, you know, a board member who was had, you know, comments on it. So we we did all the right things there. We also commented about the exclusive nature of this appeal. They did not apply for variance relief. So therefore, anytime that anyone tried to bring up things that were relevant to a variance relief discussion, it's what I had to say, not here. We had a whole little chapter about the issue of the affidavit from the the neighbor and whether or not would be accepted and how it sort of became moot because after we agreed or I recommended, under the circumstances that we accept the affidavit, that person called in and testified anyway. And then we also had, just for good measure, the role of the zoning officer. Obviously, given the nature and extent of this appeal, I don't know if there's further action on the horizon with regard to this. We never know. But it was contested, so we wanted to be as thorough as possible. So, Mr. Chairman, against that, I did as as good of a job and thorough as job as I could. And hopefully, it's acceptable to you. And if it's acceptable, we can adopt that.
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. I did just think you did a good job documenting all of that. Just before I ask for a motion to approve this resolution, does our vote during the hearing matter for our vote to approve the resolution?
Yes, excellent point. Excellent point. Technically, only those people who voted to affirm the decision of the zoning officer can participate. I mean, everyone can comment and say, hey, the resolution is good, the resolution is bad, it should say this, it should say that. But technically, April, when you call the role, only those people who voted to affirm Ted's decision should be called. And by the way, even one person alone can can would be sufficient.
Well, that answered my second question. Great, thanks, Mr. Kennedy. All right, can I have a motion to approve, to waive the reading and approve the resolution reaffirming the zoning officer's decision for 1905 Surf Avenue? Mike, you're on, you're on mute.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Mr. Malengo. Can we have a second, Mr. Capoli? Were you there?
I'm here, I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman. I do believe I was there, is that not right, April? That was one of the driveways?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I I second that motion.
Okay.
Abstain.
Yeah, so it looks like Mr. Fowler?
Abstain, I wasn't there.
Mr. Greg would abstain, he wasn't there. Mr. Fitzgerald would abstain. He was not participating. That makes only Mr. Malengo and Mr. Capoli eligible to vote. So, Mr. Capoli?
I vote to agree with our
Prove the resolution.
Yeah, prove the resolution.
Okay. Mr. Malengo?
Yes.
Ted Mead.
Okay. And that would be it.
All right, that's it. Was there any other business we needed to take care of tonight?
That's it with me.
All right.
That's it with me.
Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
All right, I had Mr. Fowler and Mr. Greg and Mr. Malengo all fighting over. It's our first, second, and third.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody, have a good night. Stay well.
Good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, April.